I spent a good ten minutes.
Yeah.
So it was like.
And then, of course, as soon as I'm walking up to the doors, I see two open spots right in front and I'm like.
Oh, wow.
That's how it goes.
No, first I came up here and there was nothing available. Actually, somebody had just put it into the handicap spot, which I, you know, I do have a permit. Somebody had just pulled into there. So that spot was taken. Um, I could have taken the spot for the fire marshal, but I didn't want to in case something going on with the. I didn't know what other meetings were going on. Wasn't till I actually went out and noticed.
So we are on and recording and it's.
Six eleven.
Called the order.
All right, guys.
Yay.
Thank you, Katie, for texting me. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
We're, you know, like.
Meeting.
No, thank you. Of course, we're we're off session until these two days right now. How lovely.
Um, I have the the agenda up, Lucas. And I think I sent the minutes, right? Everybody got the minutes like in October I sent.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
So I move we accept the minutes?
I I'll second that.
Lucas, say all in favor.
Please. Signify by saying aye.
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 Or is none? Next agenda item, review and accept meeting schedule. Okay.
So there was some confusion on whether it was the second Wednesday or the second Thursday. Um, I'm, if I know in advance, I'm okay with either. So I, we just need to decide for January, March and May.
Wednesday is better for me that I know that personally, in general.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think I recall it being second Wednesday. But I'm not sure what everybody, everybody else's schedule looks like.
Second Wednesday and it's every other month, right?
Yeah, odd months. Yep. So does second Wednesdays work for Zoom land?
Yes.
Yes.
Works for me, second month. Yeah.
So does somebody wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept our meeting schedule for the upcoming year.
I second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on. All right, next agenda, plan, agenda for the upcoming year and event schedule.
So just a update, I did connect with Park and Rec. He presented it to his board and it's been approved for us to do a co. Um, co-event on ADA. Um, the anniversary of ADA. I don't have the exact date, but it's a July date, like maybe the third. Um, Thursday, I think of July. But I'll get the, I'll email everybody the exact date.
It's awesome. Thank you.
All right, that sounds great to me.
I think at the last meeting, we talked about continuing the theme of be the change. And then maybe responding with kindness. I don't know if we wanted to fine tune that a little bit or.
I know, I'm sorry, I should, I gotta remember to start taking better notes, cuz I know I had. Made some suggestions and I now don't like it slipped out of my mind. Cuz we decided that we would focus on something specific. And I did not look at the agenda. Did we put any specific notes in this of like suggestions that were made?
Um, yes, I think you mentioned last time Jamila being more focused on like acts of kindness. So. This is what we're doing like for the homeless, or this is what we're gonna do for, um. I don't know, people who are trying to access like the food pantries. So like have it be more focused instead of generalized. What I got from us meetings. I don't think we necessarily decided on a specific focus.
Okay.
Yeah, we have time. I think that's probably the discussion we should have now.
So what are the, some of the needs Carol, are you seeing like, um, pop up?
Food, well, right now it's food.
Right.
I think this year it's gonna be, just like the past two weeks have been like watching a tennis match, right? It's been back and forth, good news, bad news, good news, bad news, bad news, bad. Um, and I think, and that was just on food, right? And I think face that with every basic need. We're gonna face that with energy. We're gonna face that with housing. Um.
Medical.
Yeah, medical coverage for sure. So.
Yeah.
Um, obviously, we'll know a little more by then where we're at. Um, but it's probably safe to, to, to predict that there'll be less resources than there are now. So maybe. Some do have. Resources from private nonprofits that would help with those like basic needs of food, health, energy.
Um, one thing that just popped up in my mind, I think, you know, last time we did want people to sort of. Volunteer. I don't know if anyone, any of the organization that we had there. Actually got any new people to volunteer, but, um, perhaps like I think about the habitat for humanities. Right? And I know how hard it is to, cuz I've tried to go online and navigate that so you can volunteer. You know, to help. So perhaps we could have some organization set that are there specifically so people could. Um, sign up and, you know, to show acts of kindness. So if Habitat for Humanities here, like you can sign up to. Work on one of their rebuild days, um, to really get people to participate in. You know, in being the change and more, well, I think the word I'm looking for mobilizing the community to act. So even like the food pantry have dates available, like, oh, we do this Thanksgiving thing. Do you wanna sign up for a day? We do, you know, you have the food bank. Do you wanna sign up to be a little bit more proactive and. Um, soliciting people to sign up. So that could be one aspect of this event.
Um, I think that's, that's a good idea. I can only speak like from our. Perspective, and I'm not sure if other agencies face this too, is we end up scheduling. Volunteers so far in advance because we need to be guaranteed the coverage, right? So, and there's so many people that have already reached out to volunteer. So even having enough opportunities. Can be a challenge. Um, that's a good problem to have, right? We have more. I mean, I think that might be unique to Newington. Like we have more help that than we necessarily have jobs, tasks for. But. That being said, there, there might be something that we could expand on that we're not doing now, like a one day. A food drive and we get volunteers for that or something like that, so that we can create an opportunity.
Right.
Maybe to, well, what I was saying like to sign up, yes, but not necessarily say sign up for November or whatever, you know, like far in advance, but. Make it available for them to know what are some opportunities within their community where they can sign up. Person and get information. And then, I don't know, this, um, when you brought up the, uh, like a food drive, um, Carol. Let's say if we have kids come, cuz at my school we do this, like, uh, they could make posters about food drive and. Perhaps we can organize something so the kids can make posters that we can perhaps put up around town. Um, to advertise a food drive.
That would be, and that, that kind of triggered another thought, like not that that in addition thought. Um, is maybe we have, um, a poster con- kindness on. A poster contest on how to show kindness, you know? And we, we have it and we judge it and we give out some prize at the event in July.
So then people would bring it to the.
To the schools, have the kids submit their posters by X date. We can have all the posters displayed at our tent. And, and judge it and give out a prize.
Hmm.
So it would have to be before the school year is over cuz remember we're doing this in the summer.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Yeah, submit it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can even, we can announce the winner to the schools and. Let that per child now or student know that they should be in attendance at this, at the event.
Oh, but I thought you were saying vote on it.
Well, I mean, that was my original thought, but no, that's.
Yeah, that, that, I, yeah.
So we know that the families are there.
Yes, yeah.
But it also might attract. Some more families to come, right? They wanna come and see their.
Yes, exactly. That, that's what I thought you meant.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. Someone that we can incorporate them in, you know, the community into it like that.
Yeah, I try to think, I wonder if there's, um. People in the community who have, um. Maybe special talents or special service, invite them to show acts of kindness to people, like offering something, let's say. Uh, barber. I don't know, I'm just throwing this. I can't think of something right now. Okay, so the act of kindness that person could be doing, like giving free haircuts. For the first ten people who shows up or, uh, what else is in the community? So maybe solicit someone or, you know, make donation. I go to this place to fix my shoes. Now that he's gonna be fixing shoes here, but maybe he could. Get him to do a coupon, like two people could have like their shoes fixed for free. You know, so ask people in the community, would they like to donate something? As an act of kindness ways. I don't know how we can sell it, but you, I mean branded, branded per se.
Yeah, no, I like that. I mean, and if we started blasting it on Zoom like. Like in May, weekly, maybe, you know, come. You know, have an opportunity to, to, you know, engage. I don't know, that, I think that sounds good. It would mean we'd have to. I think pull into action pretty quickly to have it ready in order to start advertising, but.
Right, or I don't know who we're, we are connected to in the community, um, to see. Kind of like to get them involved, like, you know, you know, um, who, doesn't one of, um. Jane and Sue's friend, they do dog grooming or something like that?
She does, whether, yeah, or like if we have a favorite restaurant, maybe we could get a, you know, a dinner donated. Sahina, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, I actually have someone that could do, um, free barbering services.
Free what?
Barbering services, so haircut, yeah. And that's, that, this is something that, that's part of his model, so, um, it'll be no problem. As long as we let him know ahead of time.
So you know how, like, we had talked about doing that Planko, I think it's called, that thing? If we had a bunch of like free things committed, free acts of kindness committed from various parts of the community. And then when people come up to our booth and they spin and they get a specific.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. They get like kind of a fun engagement game.
Yeah, and when that, when that's blank, you put something else in there. Mm-hmm. I like that, yeah.
So what, what would we put in the Planko again?
So like depending upon what, like supposing we have. Things that are kind of worth twenty dollars, things that are worth fifty dollars and things that are worth a hundred dollars. So when you spin it, if you got a. Whatever, there's like a four or five symbols. If you got this symbol, you'd get to pick a gift from the twenty dollar or a, you know, a gift of kindness from the fifty dollar.
Most of them, most of them are the little ones, which would be.
Like.
Penzer or whatever, whatever.
Or whatever.
Swag. A swag, yes. Yeah, I like that idea, um, Carol, right? Cuz no matter what, then, right, they can land and win something because even let's say Sam's Club. Didn't work out, but if twenty-five dollar gift card to go get food or. If, I don't know, uh. Dunkin' Donuts, you know, twenty-five dollars, like, you know, you can put every little thing on there, right?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Or even the barber unless we're gonna just have that standalone because, well, you have to think how many people haircuts would he wanna give?
Oh, you mean he would do the haircuts there on the site, not a.
Yes, yes, that's what he does. So he has his whole setup to come and do free haircuts.
Huh, that's a different, okay, I think that's a different thing than what you were thinking of. I was thinking a certificate for a haircut, yeah.
Oh, we can, I'm sure he'll be able to donate that service as well too, not a problem.
Yeah, but I was originally thinking someone will, some people could be there to do an act of kindness.
Okay.
You know, so I guess we.
Yeah, like I think the activities we did last time, the painting the rocks, the.
Yeah.
And that, that's very popular, the yoga, that was all very popular.
So if they do an act of kindness, they get a gift or is like, or does anybody get, not a gift, but like a prize? Does anybody get a prize? Or is it just like if you do? Like one of these things, like maybe you paint a rock or like maybe you have a station like where you can write a letter to like, I don't know, veterans are seeing, I don't know. Write a letter, like then you can spin it or is everybody gonna get to spin it?
I don't know, that's.
See, I feel like that could be our barrier to entry though. It's like, do this and then you get to spin.
I like that. So it encourages people to participate.
And, and like in, in similar fashion with what we did this year, just having something for people to do, like there, like even beyond information, like is good. Right? It's like, you know, this year, obviously, we had the bags that we were packing. It's a different situation, but. You know, if we could think of some really good. Nice, kind things that like really matter, like right, the rocks are good. The letters just is something I came up with, but like. You know, anything like that.
Well, I'm of two minds of that. I mean, I, I understand, but it's like, I. I wouldn't wanna say I'm forcing someone to, to be kind. I'm paying you to be kind in a sense. It's more like. Like you, you're doing it out of the kindness of your heart. So here are some things that are available at this event. The barber, I don't know if we can come up with something else. You, you can choose to get a haircut because this man is did. Doing his time and he's have some kindness. We have the Planko thing because people in our community chose to be. Kind and you can have the option to spell, to, to spin. We have rocks here. You can choose to. Paint a rock for the community. You can choose to make a post. You can choose to do this, but. Because you make the, paint the rock. Then you get something from us, I, you know, I, I, that's.
I hear that.
Something different. The yoga, if she's available, she's choosing, you know, her time to come there. You can choose to partake in that. Um, if the lady is available for the Hannah, she's choosing. So these are people who are choosing to be kind. Maybe then you can choose to. Pay forward in another way. And that's why I think if we should, if we can have some organization there where. The people can hear about it and choose to then partake in it in different ways. When we're advertising, maybe we could even say, choose to bring an item to donate to the food bank. And maybe we can, on the back of whatever it is. Have something different that people don't typically do to the food bank, like women need sanitary items, derodants, you know, people just typically think of. Food, baby items, like here's some things you may not, um, think of, but. We accept at the food bank, you know, it's like to. Do that as well, so they can come with something if we have enough turnout or. They can take, we can pass out flyers for them to say. Donate these items when you can, pay it forward. Like even if they have at the rock. If, you know, the station, the yoga station, she can have something to say here, you know, consider paying it forward when you have a chance to. Here's something you can do. Sorry, that was a lot.
Nope, that's okay. I like your passion.
I'm not sure if this would be too much, but I guess like. Maybe it would be helpful if we had some sort of main event, I guess, instead of having like more. Individual things that are kind of disconnected. And I was thinking like to address more like the food insecurity part. We could do like a community dinner or like a community meal. Even if like we just like packed meals to send out, maybe some organization. Sends packed meals out to shelters or whatever.
That's, that's very hard to do in the summer because of the logistics.
Okay.
Of packed meals, keeping them safe, either cold or hot or what they need to be at.
Got it.
So that is logistic.
Right, so, but maybe we have a sign up at this event. To bu- become part of volunteering and planning a community. Meal, whatever it is, breakfast, dinner in the fall, in the early fall. Maybe that would work, carry it over that way?
Would we?
You were thinking of doing the dinner right then there?
Um, I guess what I had in mind was that we would have the dinner, I guess, prepared there. Um, but I do like the idea of having people sign up. For planning this event. Um, and I guess, like, I guess the question is, would we be organizing that event then in the fall?
Yeah, we'd be looking for help to, to do it.
Okay. Uh, what does everybody think of that idea?
Sounds good.
I think this is something like we initially broached in the beginning too, and I think, you know, we're looking. You know, if we're looking for something for people to sign up for and do directly, like an event that we are planning is a great. A great way to do that. I. Yeah, it would, it would take some work. But I think a community meal is great. I mean, I see those happen all the time, especially around Thanksgiving, Katie, like if we, I mean, and this is really crazy, but. Just to put it out there for the whole thing, but like if we did a free community meal in the time of Thanksgiving, I mean, that would just be so tremendous. And something that I, I think would be not only well attended, but actually just really, really. Useful for so many people who don't have a meal during these times. Um, but that would be, that would be tough. We would need, I mean, beyond what we could pay for, which is nothing. After we spend what we spend over the summer, we would, we'd be relying like almost entirely on donations, but. If we can get people to commit to that at this event there, right? Like that's good. Like we have a hundred people sign up and like I, you know, deal with this all the time at work. Hundred people sign up, like I'm sure that we will have a significant amount that fall through, but like there will be people that will absolutely be there. Donate their time and goods and I, I think it would be feasible.
Quick question, will we be able to solicit those donations early for fall? Um, for in July for the fall, um, dinner for the community. So for example, if we have like a poster. Kind of advertising it and then allowing people to scan a QR code to then directly link them to like a donation website.
Yeah.
So that way it could, you know, cuz that could be an act of kindness as well too. Like if you don't wanna paint a rock, if you don't wanna take part in yoga, that's okay. We would like a donation for this dinner that we are planning to have for the community.
I mean, can, yeah, and, uh, Carol, that's a great question. Like can people physically, I mean, they can donate to human resources. Right? And then, but can they like specifically CC those donations to go towards this event?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, we have a line item for human rights, so they would send it to human services, but it would. Be for human rights, community event or community dinner. Yep.
Interesting. I don't, I don't see us, I, I think that we could pull that off.
I think so too. I think that would be great. I mean, cuz just imagine if we create hype around it, you know, and just really sell it to those who are attending. I think we can make this, um, Thanksgiving dinner just a big success for the community for sure.
And, and what, too, is that we, we have this layout, we have this space, we have an, a guaranteed crowd coming. From Parks and Rec, like we, there's so many things that get taken care of because we, we partner with Parks and Rec on this project in the summer. And so that really leaves it open for us to focus on, you know, getting that. Event after, once we, once we deal with, obviously nailing down what we're gonna do in the summer, but. Um, I, you know, I think that just because there's so much given there, I think it leaves us a lot more flexibility, so. I think that's a good idea. I like it a lot, Katie, and.
So who would make the meal?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Who would, who would make the meal? Like how would we, the logistics of that? And where would it be held?
We could possibly do the senior center. They have a kitchen.
Yeah.
Uh, I would have to touch base with the health department to see if there are rules on us cooking a dinner or having.
Yeah, we'd have to have it probably catered, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
For food safety.
Right.
Yeah.
So if it was catered, then we're not having to cook, but we're getting people to serve it and the.
But there is, there is, there's a significant draw in the first annual free Thanksgiving dinner. Sponsored by essentially the town of Newington, right? I feel like people. I feel like people would be really into that and supporting that. So I feel like we would, we would do really well getting the community to, to donate to that.
A rally, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the servant part, I think we as a committee could do that. It's just the, you know, cooking part. Um. I think cater, right, someone to cater that.
Yep, and if people were looking to get involved at, they could sign up to help serve or to help recruit donations or to help. Whatever, we can have a whole list of what we need.
Yeah, it, it's just, we have to, we, we have to make sure we, A, we don't, we wouldn't run out of food. And be, we'd have to know how many people are coming roughly in advance and that those would be.
You can make it an RSVP that it doesn't have to be everybody. It can be the first. Fifty or the first whatever, however many.
Okay, that's a good idea, Carol. I like that.
Yeah, absolutely, cuz otherwise. You're either gonna have too much or too little. It never works out just right.
Yeah.
Having catered a few events that are, you have no idea.
And like, you know, even, even something like simple, like promoting it in the senior center newsletter for some time, like will probably get us.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think if we ask to have it at the senior center.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Your population.
Would be.
Is isolated and might be a large part of the population that would attend.
Yeah, and then we gotta get those vets over there by the high school.
Yep.
You know, if we do, if we can hit those two places really hard, I think we're hitting, you know, at least in our community where, where we gotta be at.
Yeah, there's a veterans coffee hour. We could go and present it.
Oh, yeah, that's a great. Yeah, that's a great idea. Okay, these are all very good ideas. So summertime. So we're kindness, sign up for our event. Possibly other vendors, make some rocks, splint, spin a playgo, win some prizes. I, I think, I think that's a solid enough theme. It's like be kind. Yeah, be kind to others, be, be kind to yourself and others.
Um, I know years ago at a human rights event, we had, we had this like. Stick tree that we made out of branches and people. Stick tree that we made out of branches and people wrote um. Acts of kindness onto the tree, so that could be an event as well. You know, how can I kind, I can, you know. Follow the law for my neighbor or.
Mm hmm, right.
Um, maybe to move it forward, we all come in with um some more concrete ideas for March's meeting.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Cause we're probably gonna wanna start advertising by May.
Oh, yes, definitely, for sure.
And then at that time, maybe um craft a little note. Or letter that we can bring to um organizations. Or what we call them, people around the community to for the donating, like we did um for the last. Cause I think, you know, most time they need something to. And then with the um tax ID number, which. I found out that we need so, you know, to have something.
Right.
I can have that for the next meeting and Lucas and I can co-sign it. Okay, yeah. Lucas as the chair and and myself as the. Yeah, cause if maybe we can start early and not wait till, well, I know me, it takes me a while to get.
And like before.
Start in April, well, if you have the letter in March, then April, we can start soliciting um. Places to get donations.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anything more on this?
I think.
No, I was just wondering if there's anything for, that we could do right now for some of the immediate food needs that. Some people are struggling with. Um, I just found out today that SNAP is not even um. Going through new applications right now.
Well, they're taking the new application.
But they're not doing anything with us.
And you you know, by the end of the day today, that the house will be open, the president will sign in, the government will reopen, so.
And they'll process them, so it's kind of a, yeah.
Yeah, but the, but what what the problem is right now is that it. Through the funding bill that was passed last year, the big beautiful bill, there are significant cuts in SNAP. That that families are gonna be facing from now on. So like beyond what their regular benefits are, they're gonna be slashed.
Mm hmm.
Which is, is just so terrible, but Carol, how have the donations been at the, how have, how have you guys? Been doing, just out of curiosity, like what?
You've been very responsive. We, we put up a um. Wishlist, an Amazon wishlist, and we've had stuff coming in from Amazon daily and. Um, then we also asked for grocery gift cards, cash donations. We got a grant from Connecticut Food Share. So um, yeah, the response has been good. Um, that being said, obviously people not, you know, in the first. These first couple of weeks when they didn't know where it was heading, um, we probably have. Three dozen new households on the food bank. Which is great that that identified a resource for them and meets a need. But we will now carry that going forward, right? We're not gonna lose that just cause SNAP will be back in place. So that'll be an increased ongoing food um food need and. Meeting people's needs in Newington, you know, it's like both sides of the coin.
So I'm on a committee elsewhere where one of the needs that came up were. People that were going to um pantries that had special food needs. That could not be met at the pantries. And what this community has decided to do, which I personally wanna do, but if we could do something. I don't know, as a committee, um, is they did a, like an adopt a family that had special needs. And basically you did grocery shopping for them, um, because they also had transportation needs. So what they do in this community is they adopt a family, they find out what their special needs are. Um, we have one family that the whole family is gluten free. We have kids with um. Diabetes been a huge one, you know, trying to get at pantries, things that are appropriate for a diabetic. So they actually communicate with the family. They they establish a relationship with the family. To find out what their particular needs are. They shop for and deliver it to the family. I just thought that was really cool. Um. So, you know.
I love the concept. I don't know, it feels a little big for a human rights commission.
Yes, yes.
I mean, at least what I'm seeing and my, you know, where I am right now is that. A, a, a number of our elected officials are really looking to get involved too, and I I will say that honestly, if we. If we wanted to and we were crazy enough, like, we, we really probably could contact Gary and tell him that we'd be. You know, we would love to partner with him on a monthly food drive and I like one hundred percent guarantee you he would do it. Like at a stop and shop, like one weekend a month or something. But, you know, as far as like, I'm just thinking about our needs and like what we would be able to do as people, like. Something like that would be much more tangible, I would think, but. You know, like I said, we really have to keep, you know, we wanna keep our focus on our big events, but I can understand wanting to set something up and do something. Right now, too.
Hmm.
Um.
Is there? Is there a vision that you have for. Connecting with the people with dietary needs? I I guess I don't.
Well, that's the thing, that's the thing is, this, this one particular group that I was working with, um. They had access to that information. They knew because of the medical, but.
If you get. From a medical provider?
Yes, yes, yeah, but. If we have people that are going to pantries looking for things and can't find what they, you know, what's appropriate. That's, it's like, how do we identify that here in town? Do you have an idea of people?
I think. I think more obtain, more doable would be, we could potentially do. Like a survey as clients come in to use the food bank. Are there particular food needs? Uh, based on dietary restrictions that you are not able to receive, please list.
That would be great, yeah.
We would have that list and we could post that list. And get donations and have it available as opposed to getting a specific family shopping, but that might feels like unwieldy.
Yes, yeah.
But this might be a modified version of still addressing.
Yeah, because I could tell you right now, the carbohydrate counts and what you can get at a pantry. Uh, is just astronomical for diabetics and um, and it's also really rough for people that are gluten free.
I like, I like the idea of having a survey, then we can keep it anonymous.
Yeah, exactly.
People, you know, choose to not put their name, whatever.
And then we could circle that into developing a wishlist. That we could add to our Amazon list and like Lucas said, maybe do not maybe a monthly. Food drive, but at least maybe a spring food drive for those specific dietary needs.
Right.
Also promote those items at our summer event, say, hey, you know, like. We're having a food fundraiser.
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking too, like, you know, when I mentioned about creating like a flyer to hand out. Did you know, sort of like the food bank also need, so maybe, you know, could put some of those specific. Items like, oh, items that are gluten free, items that are, have these certain, you know, characteristics. And give people something that they can draw from, like as little shopping list. Okay, I can play with a survey for next meeting. Um, and then if we, and I'll run it by, I mean, it would be me ultimately, but Pam Wasak is the. Food bank coordinator, run it by her, we can work on coming up with a survey, bring it to next uh, next meeting.
All right, well, that sounds good. Thank you, Carol.
Mm hmm.
Oh, Carol, oh, I'm just thinking, cause we're, this is in the summertime, right? In one act of kindness they could do, you know, they have to pack the backpacks. Do we have, do you have the stuff in the summer? When do you get the stuff for the backpacks? Um. And um. We don't, it it dribbles in prom, we start giving them out in the middle of August, so it. We start getting them the beginning of July to the end of July, so that is kind of a timeframe, but we wouldn't necessarily have all of the. Items by then. Um. Okay, so that's saying like, you know, people there could pack the backpacks for. Yep. For the fall. Okay, never mind. But there might be something, again, that, you know, in in this list, ways to help in your community.
Mm hmm.
Back to supplies, special dietary needs.
Mm hmm.
I mean, I I will, you know, adopt, you know, sponsor energy needs because I will tell you. Um, with C A, C Connecticut Energy Assistance being on, um, you know, somewhat unstable. They are going much slower in the granting of the applications, so we are finding that. We're trying to bridge people until typically they could get their first oil delivery. And because they haven't been granted yet, we're finding we're doing more and more of those, so. You know, financial donations to help your neighbors in need of heat or something.
Mm hmm.
With a bunch of different ways of helping.
Mm hmm.
Is there anyone from that organization that could come and say, talk about how to. Like to be at a table to talk about how they can help. Help their neighbors, cause I know sometimes on your bill, you can say donate an extra. Amount of money. Towards someone else. That's a possibility. It's generation power. Now, it used to be operation fuel, now it's general power, but that dollar goes to. So, yeah, I mean, that would obviously be impacting not this energy season, but next energy.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We could ask them to have a table there.
Mm hmm.
Are we on, are we on our next section, member reports?
Yep.
Oh, here we are. Does anyone have anything special to report? Give us anything, give us some good news. Who's got good news?
If we, again, have been dealing with the, the whole SNAP, the response to the SNAP crisis.
And God love you, Carol.
Food in every preface of this town hall. Um, but that, that's going smoothly. Next Thursday is our Thanksgiving food distribution. We give out to three hundred and fifty households. Close to a thousand individuals.
Hmm.
Um, and then in December, we move right into holiday gift distribution. Um, we anticipate four hundred households by then.
Now.
To grow. Um. We've got a new part-time youth worker, so that's great and and great programs going on with our youth. Um, mentoring in the schools, counseling in the schools, uh, leadership for. Bon- that they volunteer and look for community projects done by youth. Um, so really good youth programming going on.
That's amazing, and if enough, enough people haven't told you recently, Carol. I, I think all of us in these past few weeks have realized just how important. Our human service directors are, especially our one here in town that kept the food on the table for so many people across our town, like. Uh, families, seniors, you kept the food on, Carol. You guys did that. And we couldn't be more thankful. So I just wanna thank you and um if everybody that's in the room and online can give our dear human services director a clap. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, I can't accept that personally. I, we truly have a great team, both staff and volunteers.
Thank you all, really, thank you.
Any other um member reports?
I'm gonna be at work very late tomorrow, guys. Pray for me.
We always pray for you.
But that's, that's it. Okay, well, seeing none. No other mother, or we got any public participation. I don't know what it's looking like on there. I don't see anyone over here.
No one from the public.
Okay, and the, the one call we never actually need to make is uh, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Diane first with the second.
All right, all those in favor, I. We are adjourned.
The pose just stays here.
Good night.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Bye.
Oh, boy. No, we were wondering, um.
Wait, is it still recording?
That, oh.
Good thing, there we go, I couldn't find stop.